Tonight, it is seven o'clock on June first, 2021. We are in the commission chambers for our first regular city commission meeting of the Ormond Beach City Commission. And I hope our airport manager, Stephen Licklider, and our utilities manager, Tim Heyrend, welcomed you. They were our greeters this evening. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. While I'm doing that, make sure if you did want to speak on any item, that you get your cards in to the clerk and the assistant clerk, recording secretary, and because once we start, that opportunity is over. Let me introduce the folks that are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, our recording secretary, Cassidy Ritz. That's who you take the cards to. Assistant city clerk, Wendy Hauntz. Commissioner Dwight Selby from Zone One. Commissioner Troy Kent from Zone Two.
Hey, everybody.
To my left and your right, our deputy mayor and Zone Three Commissioner Susan Persis.
Good evening, everyone.
And Zone Four Commissioner Rob Littleton. Next to him is our city manager, Joyce Shanahan. Assistant city manager, Claire Whitley. City attorney, Randy Hayes. And for those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. If you would please, at this time, silence your cell phones, and we will rise for the invocation given by Pastor Kyle Kwiatowski from Blueprint Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm honored to be able to pray. Pray with me. Lord Jesus, we give you this time, God, as we try our best as a whole. Lord, we pray for the mayor and every leader for this wonderful city. God, that you give wisdom and clarity and vision to walk through the steps, God, as we have been going through the last year, coming up on two years of COVID, and just everything being changed as we know it for life. God, pray, we pray, for our leaders, that they can make wise decisions, right decisions, and, God, decisions that are best not just for this city, but for this state and this country. God, we are all part of the whole, and we ask for your blessing, your grace, and your mercy to help us do this. Pray for this time, all to be in your hands. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask Major Fanny L. Rivera to come forward, and you can bring your family if you want. We're going to have you stand right in the center here and face the audience while I read this proclamation. Perfect. And we're going to get a picture with you afterwards. Yesterday, as you know, was Memorial Day, and it's a somber day of remembrance where we honor the fallen and pay our respects to our military service members. Tonight, we have an opportunity to have more of a celebration of our military service members, and particularly, one person in particular, Major Rivera, who's had an amazing experience here in the United States and an amazing military career. So let me read this proclamation, and I think you'll understand a little more. Whereas Major Fanny L. Rivera was born in Tagusagalpa, Honduras, and moved to the United States at an early age, she moved around growing up as her family sought better opportunities. This allowed Fanny the advantage of living in many states, including California, Florida, and Illinois, and graduating from high school in Chicago. And whereas, while living in Miami, Fanny's family were neighbors with the Rivera family, Fanny and Jean met and fell in love. They married in 2000 and have two children under the age of six. And whereas Fanny signed up for the military in 2001 after 911, joining her husband in the Army. At the time of those horrific events, Fanny and Sergeant Jean Rivera were stationed overseas in Germany. Fanny started out in the enlisted ranks as Army Private Second Class and eventually achieved the rank of Sergeant as an NCO, non-commissioned officer, which allowed her to be selected for Officer School. She worked hard, and once school was complete, she worked her way up through the officer ranks to Major. She also received an Associate's Degree in General Studies and a Bachelor's Degree in Computer Science from the University of Maryland while working and serving our country. And whereas Major Rivera received orders to bases around the world, allowing her to be stationed in places such as Georgia, North Carolina, Arizona, Germany, and Korea, she deployed twice to Afghanistan in support of Operation Enduring Freedom and spent eighteen months in Kuwait in support of Operation Inherent Resolve. Major Rivera served in many positions during her career, starting at driver and working all the way to Brigade Security Officer. She's received many awards and decorations during her service, including the Meritoria Service Medal, Army Joint Commendation Medal, Army Commendation Medal, and Army Achievement Medal. And whereas Major Rivera's military career is nothing short of extraordinary, her last day in uniform for the Army will be June 16th, 2021, with her official retirement date on October 31st, 2021. Major Rivera made the difficult decision to retire in order to stay home to raise her children and care for her now-retired husband, who was injured during his service. Her family is extremely proud of her and will support her in anything that she chooses to pursue. And the City of Ormond Beach would like to thank Major Rivera for her service to this great country. Now, therefore, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of this entire commission, do hereby proclaim June first, 2021, as a day to recognize Major Rivera in the City of Ormond Beach and urge all residents to join me in wishing her and her family the best in her well-deserved retirement and all future endeavors. Congratulations. And tonight, we will start with Connie Colby, followed by Norman Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Connie Colby. I live at 108 Roble Lane in Ormond Beach. I have been asked to read this on behalf of Eric Brittenberg, who could not stay tonight. Tearing down a techie bar is one thing, tearing down an aesthetically important piece of architecture, in this case, the mid-century modern house of worship with a spectacular interior is another thing. Historic preservation matters, in particular if one's vision for a community encapsulates not just the present, but also the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Norman Lane, followed by Terry Mercer.
Hi, I'm Norman Lane. I live at 1314 North Side Drive in Ormond. I just think that that building, the church that the city invested in, is just has a tremendous amount of potential for becoming a community center or one of any number of things that people have proposed and that really maybe not enough thought has been put into that. I know that Mr. Jones looked at it pretty hard and put a lot of effort into trying to decide whether something like that might be feasible, but he was looking at it from the point of view of running a business, as something that have to turn a profit or at least break even, whereas with a city, we don't necessarily have to do that. I think we need to look at it from a different perspective. I would ask that this, you all reconsider the decision that you've been made and allow a little more time to look into this thing. I also have a letter that was from Dr. Katie Tripp, who couldn't make it tonight, so I'm going to read that to you. "Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, it has come to my attention that you're expected to vote tonight on demolition of the subject church." She didn't end that quite right, but I would ask you to delay this vote until alternatives can be considered. I have seen informational presentation prepared by Ormond Main Street, which indicated historical interest in the building and its architecture, as well as costs associated with demolition versus renovation. I recall reading in the paper that there are air quality concerns inside the building, but I strongly believe that there is opportunity for this property that will be destroyed once the building is demolished. Please table this discussion until a broader conversation with citizens can occur. I recall from the downtown steering committee meetings on which I gladly serve, that there is interest in a convention space downtown. It would be possible to rethink use of existing structures in the downtown corridor to accommodate this vision. Should you convene citizens to gather input, I would gladly participate. Thank you for considering my request."
Thank you.
When it's gone, it's gone.
Next is Terry Mercer, followed by Jason Oftenberg.
My name is Terry Mercer. I live at 31 Dix in Ormond Beach, and once again, I count it parking spaces. I think two years ago, I counted parking spaces and gave you my numbers. I started from Beach Street to US One, one block north and south of Granada. There are 1,027 parking spaces in that area. They are not all public, but there are close to 500 that are public. The library has 215 public parking spaces. The police station has 22, and a half a block away, heading south from the police station, are 58 parking spaces. The school has 52 spaces after 5:00 p.m. Just add some steps down to Granada to get people there. We don't need to tear down a building for more parking. We need to do a better job with signage. Plus, remember, all the restaurants have some parking. If you park at the public lot, that is the furthest away, it takes about three minutes to walk to the core restaurant area versus walking from the church to the core restaurant area. Three extra minutes is all it takes to walk it. We don't need to tear down a building and add a million-dollar parking lot on a river for three extra minutes. I believe the building could be used as a community center, concert hall, art hub, bike shop, kayak rental depot, community gardens with maybe an EDC, someone there from the EDC to give you the habitat of the river. It's literally right on the loop. Put in more bike racks. Start making the city more bike-friendly, walkable, so people can use other forms of transportation to come down. Ask businesses that close at 5:00 to share their parking. I understand you're doing that. Downtown has a lot going on, and thank you for that. I absolutely love downtown, but let's not tear it down. Let's not put a million-dollar parking lot on a river. Let's think outside the box for the potential. Please reconsider tearing down this building. Give the community some time to bring ideas before you. Please do not pass over this. And as always, thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Terry. Jason Oftenberg, followed by Monique von Ottinger.
Hello, Mayor and Councilpeople. My name is Jason Oftenberg. I live at 220 South Frederick in your neighbor city of Daytona Beach. I also serve on the Board of the St. John's River Sea Loop Alliance, and we're so excited that the East Coast Greenway that runs all the way from Key West all the way to Maine goes right along, right along here. And we're excited about the possibility of the church property not becoming necessarily a parking lot, but something that can really make people excited to converge on the area through the trail system. I, when I visit Daytona, Ormond Beach, which I love doing, I often come to your city by bicycle. And as the, as the system gets built out, more people will be riding in Daytona, in, sorry, Ormond Beach, by bicycle. And so having some kind of trail hub, some kind of place where people can learn about the loop is just one possibility for that property, I think, would be really nice. A fellow Daytona Beach citizen who wasn't able to be here, Shania Estec sent you an email today. I just thought I'd read some of her words. She said, "As a resident of Daytona Beach and as one who loves to walk around your Granada downtown area, I'm writing today to express my thoughts about the plans for 56 Beach Street. Granada is turning into a successful bustling downtown with all the harm, all the hallmarks of a great place to visit, and it's a shame if the new parking takes the place of parks and trees and other places that people like to visit. So encouraging bicycle and walking would be preferable." And lastly, just to reemphasize the whole trail of idea, if Ormond can step up for trails, history, outdoor recreation, cycle tourism, about a bike-friendly Echo Resort Trailhead or something like Daytona is doing, would be great. So please consider his ideas to make Ormond Beach an even better place to visit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Monique von Ottinger, followed by Linda Williams.
Yes, hello. My name is Monique von Ottinger, and I live on 112 Royal Dune Circle. Been here for 10 years, lived here 15 years ago for a couple of years, but it pulled me back to, us back to Ormond Beach. And that's why you might understand that I was really sad and a bit upset, or really upset, when I heard this church. I have never been inside, unfortunately, but I saw the pictures and I got informed and that this is set up for demolition. And I could not understand it. So when I meet people, and of course, because of my accent probably, they say, "Oh, you're from Europe. Oh, I was there. Oh, my gosh, isn't that beautiful? Oh, my gosh." And people cannot stop just raving about the impression, the old buildings, the cities, the structures, anything makes. And of course, Europe is a bit older and not as, the state is not that old, so it's hard to have like 3,000-year-old buildings here. But what we have here is 80 years old, and it's getting up there. It's getting to its first century. So I think we have so many empty spaces, we have so many empty buildings, empty high rises with tons of empty time shares and so on. And of course, we are so spoiled, we have so much space around and green around. In Europe, we have to house, keep household with our, with the amount of space we have. So I wonder if we have that building there, and it is, I admire those wooden trusses, this wooden construction, it's very imposing. And also the stained glass, and I think it would be such a pity if we would not be able to find a way to save that, you know? When our kids are, and our grandkids and great-grandkids, maybe they will read and say, "You know, there was a church there. Why didn't we keep it? Where did it go? Where did Julians go? Where did the hotel go? Where did so much go?" Right? Which they only will learn if people still remember that it has been there and was not saved. So I would imply you to think about it and to give the citizens some time, some leeway to think it over, come up with. I think I have heard so many great, great incentives and things which we could do with that building in this form or different form.
Thank you, Monique.
I thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am. Linda Williams, followed by George Cohen.
First, I'd like to read something from someone who could not be here, Kathy Maloney Johnson. She says, "When we drive to St. Augustine in South Beach in Winter Park, are we going there because we like the parking?" Question mark. The answer is no. Why not begin a public-private partnership by not tearing down a type of building that no one can afford to build right now? The subject of tearing down Union Church seems short-sighted on the heels of laying Julians to rest, to waste. Okay, so from me, I like, I, like you, want to make things better in our community, and I know that about you all. Thank you. We all share the community, the streets, the air, the resources. I wasn't really that interested in the church, except for folks to come to common ground and for us to reach some common decisions about it together. That was my goal. And then one day, just out of nowhere, I thought about the church, and I went across the bridge, knowing I couldn't get in it, but the folks who are going to be tearing it down were there, so I got to look in it. And I walked in, and I saw it for the first time, the very first time, and I was stunned by its beauty. And I know there are many things that are wrong, but the dome ceiling with the beautiful wood, all of a sudden, I could no longer imagine our community destroying that. It seems like such a waste, including a waste of the past builder's time and the love of those who built it. Just yesterday, out of the blue, someone told me that the price of wood had soared, I mean, tripled. And a builder told me how much more the price of building a new home would be. So anything that we build new now is going to cost twice as much or more because of COVID. I thought about the church. I've been obsessed with it since then. I just can't imagine that it would be wise to not look at the potential of what is already before us. I can't imagine a more beautiful building for Ormond Beach. Standing there, I imagined an outdoor amphitheater, a music venue, and certainly preserving an architectural treasure, if we had to take the walls off even, you know? I think if we did an assessment now of how much it will cost to build something new, it will be sky-high compared to two years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next is George Cohen, followed by Rita Press.
My name is George Cohen, and I live at 1551 Crownview Drive. I, I just want to join the chorus that you've heard here. I just recently heard of this, and we sent some documents illustrating what this building's about and also potential uses that have been made of similar facilities elsewhere. And when I heard that you folks had gone ahead to think of demolishing this and converting it to a parking lot, it, it just seemed to me that we could do better than that. I understand the need for good parking in the town, but there are other potentials for that. But this is such a significant site. I would just hope that you would reconsider your decision that you've made, and that you would take a closer look at, at at least a dozen ideas that I've heard in the two days that I've known about it, that seem like promising ones that need further thought, of course, and, and cost analysis. But what a boon for the community this might be, a significant structure there that can be used well by the community in many, many ways. Let's not pass it up and make a parking lot out of it. Thanks.
Thank you, George. Rita Press, followed by Jim Schultz.
It's good to be here without a mask. It's wonderful. Because of COVID-19, a lot of us, including myself, were really not involved in the early discussions about the church. I'm sorry that I wasn't, but I am here today. I always felt that the church building could be repurposed to be a venue for community activities. Now, maybe I've been watching too much HTV shows, because, and when they do that, they show you a building that's so decrepit and horrible, but they take it down to the bare bones, and we have a building that is bare bones and is good. As I said, I always thought this property was valuable property, and I always thought that he could find a buyer who had the foresight and financial means to create something very special with it. The thought of taking down this building to put up a parking lot made of shells, my goodness, that is so unlike Ormond Beach. I was surprised to learn when I was learning about this, that there was a suggestion. The suggestion was that there be a six-month reprieve to really study this. So there are three commissioners, one, two, three. They are the only ones here who could say to this community, "You know what? We're going to give you six months. We're going to give you six months to form a committee with, with real estate people, with people with good ideas, maybe even put something on the internet, or come in with some ideas for this." We need six, we need one person, one commissioner here, to say to this community, "Give us six months." I know, I'm going to go to you, Commissioner Troy Kent. You have always been a fiscal responsible person, ever since I know you, always looking out for the dollar. This may be a time that maybe, let's say you even decide to take it down, but maybe there would be somebody who would take it down, pay the cost. Why, why don't we explore everything that's possible? Give us six months. That's all the community is asking. And after the six months, when we have pros and cons and give you all those things, then we can go, and you can say, "You know what? We've looked at everything. We've really explored everything. And you know what? We're taking it down." Well, then we have really looked at it. So that's what I'm asking you. I've got 28 seconds, 27, six. I am asking this community, just one commissioner, to give this city a chance to come back with something that really might work. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. And Jim, last but not least.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard Drive. At times, being on Harvard is sort of like a test strip for race drivers, but, you know, it's by sea breeze, but more on that later. That's not tonight's topic. You know, I'm thankful that you had the Memorial Day celebration. It's easy to forget things. Some things not so easy. But our First Amendment, I think, is probably at extreme risk of being lost now. I think Big Tech is leading the charge by eliminating things they find inconvenient to themselves because it doesn't fit their desire, or somebody that's important to them, whoever's giving them money, or, you know, whatever. But what I really wanted to talk about, and there's still plenty of time, is that fluoride alert sent a request to the CDC to look at some of the court information and the neurotoxicity data for children and fetuses, and see if they wouldn't want to evaluate the safety. Because right now, the EPA is being asked to provide a amount of fluoride in the water that would be protective for the at-risk groups of infants and fetuses from neurotoxic damage, IQ loss. Yeah, that's a terrible thing to lose. You know, a tooth is bad, your brain function, or increased attention deficit hyperactivity. Yeah, that's pretty ugly, too. And then the other issue was, like the Swedish study just came up before, when you admit that you're increasing hip fractures by a factor of 50% by having water exposure, one per million and lower, you're saying something very important. Well, did they ever know about this? Oh, sort of. They've done tests in the United States, too, showed the same thing. They didn't decide to publish them or really inform the public. Even the first test, well, the second test in Newburgh, New York, they noticed a couple of other things, more cortical bone fractures in the kids, the girls reaching puberty six months earlier. Hmm, does the same thing in test animals, too. Just an observation, didn't change their mind because that wasn't what they were looking for. So sometimes you have to look beyond what the obvious is and look for the real issue on COVID, too.
Thank you, Jim.
alert sent a request to the CDC to look at some of the court information and the neurotoxicity data for children and fetuses, and see if they wouldn't want to evaluate the safety. Because right now, the EPA is being asked to provide a amount of fluoride in the water that would be protective for the at-risk groups of infants and fetuses from neurotoxic damage, IQ loss. Yeah, that's a terrible thing to lose. You know, a tooth is bad. Your brain function or increased attention deficit hyperactivity. Yeah, that's pretty ugly, too. And then the other issue was, like the Swedish study just came up before, when you admit that you're increasing hip fractures by a factor of 50% by having water exposure, one part per million and lower, you're saying something very important. Well, did they ever know about this? Oh, sort of. They've done tests in the United States, too, showed the same thing. They didn't decide to publish them or really inform the public. Even the first test, well, the second test in Newburgh, New York, they noticed a couple of other things, more cortical bone fractures in the kids. The girls reaching puberty six months earlier. Hmm, does the same thing in test animals, too. Just an observation, didn't change their mind because that wasn't what they were looking for. So sometimes you have to look beyond what the obvious is and look for the real issue on COVID, too.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you for your service, too. Navy, right? Jim? Navy, right? I thought I saw you stand yesterday during the Navy, Navy hem.
Well, I was hurrying, but I got out there three years ago.
Gotcha. Thank you.
It takes like a long time, but not so much.
I hear you. Approval of minutes, the minutes have been sent to the commission for review and posted to the city's website. Any additions, commission? Any deletions, any corrections?
I move approval of the minutes from the commission meeting on May 18th, 2021.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We'll show those passing unanimously. The consent agenda action is proposed and stated for each item on the consent agenda. Unless a commissioner removes an item from the consent agenda, no discussion on individual items will occur and a single motion will approve all items. Does any member wish to pull any agenda item?
Mayor, I, mayor, I would like to pull items C and item H.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item K.
So need a motion to approve absent C, H, and K.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, absent items C, H, and K.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Wendy, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. Seven C.
Resolution number 2021-94, a resolution accepting a proposal from Upham Inc. for design services regarding the Doug Thomas Way Extension Project, authorizing the execution of a work authorization and payment therefore, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-94, read by title only.
Thank you. Just need a motion and a second for discussion, please. Submove.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, mayor. The commission may recall that at our last budget meeting last year, I wasn't in favor of this project. I'm still not. I'm not convinced it's needed. I don't think it provides much benefit. I think there's other priorities we could use the transportation fund for, and I don't think many citizens are going to like the fact that we're going to cut down a bunch of trees and go over wetlands for it. So I will not be supporting this project.
Anyone else? Wendy, please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
No.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we go to seven H.
Resolution number 2021-97, a resolution authorizing an additional expenditure for the sole source, no, I'm sorry, wrong one, my fault. Resolution number 2021-99, a resolution authorizing the execution of a work authorization with Hoyle, Tanner, and Associates regarding a supplemental environmental assessment to extend runway 927 and taxiway Alpha at the Ormond Beach Municipal Airport, authorizing payment therefore and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-99, read by title only.
Thank you, and I will start with Economic Development Director Brian Roddamer to speak on this, this item.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, commissioners.
Good evening.
Just give a little background on, on this item which we have before you. It's a work authorization for Hoyle, Tanner, and Associates to do a supplemental environmental assessment for the extension of runway 927. As you may know and recall, the extension of the runway is part of the airport master plan, which was approved in 2015. The design and environmental assessment for the extension of runway 927 and taxiway Alpha was completed back in 2018, and the FAA concluded and provided a finding of no significant impact for the project, and then provided, the FAA provided the city with a construction grant in 2019 to extend the runway and the taxiway, an extension of 1,000 linear feet to the west. Within that grant, the FAA had a special condition that required the city to acquire either easements or fee title to the, that portion of the runway protection zone, or RPZ, that was not on airport property. Given the project of 1,000 feet to the west, it would have pushed that RPZ over five acres of land that was on private property on unincorporated Volusia County. The city, through its good efforts, made efforts to obtain those easements, but was unable to meet that special condition. We discussed that with the FAA, and they inquired if our master plan had any other alternative scenarios for a runway extension. We indicated that there was an alternative to extend the runway 600 feet to the west. And so with their coordination and their assistance, we looked to revise the scope to construct 600 feet to the east, or, I'm sorry, to the west. The supplemental environmental assessment is a requirement and is for the revised scope, and its purpose is to identify changes to the project that are relevant to the environment based on the new project, in this case, going from 1,000 feet to 600 feet. And it will also review and go over information that was not addressed in the original environmental assessment. Once the, once Hoyle, Tanner, and Associates completes that SEA, it will be followed by a 30-day public comment period, and it will be reviewed by the FAA. It's during that 30-day public comment period that, you know, a public meeting may be called in order for residents to review the findings and to provide comments and ask questions. Just to discuss or explain the benefits of the runway extension project, you know, the runway protection zone, based on the new project of 600 feet to the east, west, the runway protection zone will remain on airport property. And then the project itself also does not change the airport's fleet mix, so airplanes that currently use the airport will continue to use the airport and won't provide for any larger aircraft to land there. The runway extension also provides safety improvements to the flying public, and it helps the airport serve in its role as a public transportation facility. The runway extension may also reduce the impact of noise, as aircraft will have a longer approach for takeoff and for landing. And so with that, we have a recommendation for approval of the proposed work authorization.
Thank you, Brian. If you would, just be on standby in case there's any questions later. We're going to go to cards now. We've got several cards, and we will start with David Slick, followed by Joel Hernandez.
Good evening, mayor, and Mrs. Persis, vice mayor, and commissioners. I'm David Slick. I live at 322 Johnny Anderson. And I want to just, some of the things that our development director has said are true, I want to mention that this goes back to 2015, which he mentioned. There were two separate public readings of this. There was 37 people at the first one, there was 51 people at the second one, and the runway extension was discussed extensively on August 24th meeting, and did not receive significant opposition to the extension. So I'm just basically reconfirming that. But the other thing I'd like to talk about is one of the issues that haven't been discussed enough, I don't think, is the economic impact of the airport on our community. There are several businesses in the industrial park that are there because of the airport. Our company looked at available land in several places in central Florida, and we're at the airport because, or we're at the Ormond Beach Business Park because of the airport. We started with 12 employees in 1986. We have approximately 150 employees now, and they range from accountants, engineers, direct factory workers, marketing executives, and there are many high-paying jobs that are full-time positions with 40 hours a week, medical insurance, paid holidays, vacations, benefits. Our payroll is over $7 million. There's a multiplier effect on how that impacts the city. There's a new manufacturing company looking to relocate from the northeast, and they also need an airport. This runway extension will create more jobs and lessen the noise pattern for those people that live east of the airport. The success of the Ormond Crossings Commercial Park is greatly enhanced by the co-location with the airport. And one other point I'd like to make is there's been a lot of discussion and talk about the city forcing a golf course out of business. And I would say that this is patently false. The golf course was never a viable business, and when it failed, there was no recourse because the current FAA policy is that there will be no golf courses adjacent to the airports. This project started due to a need to modernize the airport and bring more high-paying commercial jobs, high-paying manufacturing jobs. That is working, and we now have a chance to see more high-paying career jobs to keep our well-educated children here in Ormond Beach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Joel Hernandez, followed by Mike Rogers.
Good evening, Joel Hernandez, 655 Pine Lane Trail. I'm here to save you some money because in regards to this supplemental environmental assessment, this matter has already been studied and considered on the original assessment report, which was prepared by Hoyle and Tanner, who you're trying to sign off by the airport manager, Stephen Licklider, sign off by the FAA in 2018, and has been available to this commission since. The assessment identified four alternatives. Alternative one is to extend the runway to the east by 400 feet and to the west by 600 feet for the 1,000-feet extension that is desired. Alternative two, to extend the runway to the west by 1,000 feet. The alternative was abandoned this year as the expectations by the FAA were not met. Alternative three, to extend the runway to the west by 600 feet. This alternative is being pursued now and presented to this commission. The last alternative was to take no action, no extension. This is preferred, obviously, by myself and the large majority of those that live around the airport that keep getting bombarded by jet traffic. To make it simple, and to make it simple to understand, on the 55th page of the original assessment, you should have it in front of you now, an alternative analysis decision matrix was completed. I'll speak about alternative three, as that is what we are here for tonight, and then speak out about alternative number one, which is clearly the overall goal of this expansion. The analysis identified that alternative three did not fully meet the purpose and needs of the expansion. Although the expansion would not expand beyond the airport's property, it would place impact on wetlands and wildlife for tree removal. This alternative was rejected as the inability to meet the purpose and need of the expansion made it unreasonable. I say that again, unreasonable. As Mr. Licklider states in multiple emails with the FAA, this present extension of 600 feet to the west is phase one of the overall goal to extend the runway 1,000 feet by expanding 400 additional feet to the east, which brings us back to alternative one, now called phase two, if you proceed forward. What will the expansion, expansion to the east include? The clearing of several acres of trees, building across three holes of River Bend Golf, require the realignment of airport road, and make the runway protection zone run across airport road near to the edge of the Timoca River, bringing impact to the 100-year floodplain of the river and wetlands. This alternative was also rejected as the combined environmental impacts and higher costs made it unfeasible and unreasonable. I say it again, unfeasible and unreasonable. It's on your paper. So as stated on the original assessment that has been available to you, I ask you not to go forward the supplemental assessment, as it has already been identified as unreasonable and unfeasible. This is clearly a terrible investment for the city, and those funds can be put to better use. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Rogers, followed by Mike Gelati.
My name's Michael Rogers, 667 Pine Lane Trail, Ormond Beach, Florida, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. As Joel just mentioned quite a bit of this, I'm going to speak as it pertains to the SE funding itself we're looking at doing tonight, which is $45,000 cost for this SEA. As it pertains to the funding to the SEA for $45,000, maybe you should ask yourselves, why did the FAA and FDOT decline to fund it, which, by the way, they usually do? After all, these are the two agencies that usually fund these types of projects for the city. As far as the FAA goes, the deputy director of the Southeastern Division in Atlanta, Georgia, stated that the city got themselves into this mess, and so they need to pay to get themselves out of it. For that matter, your own consultants, Hoyle, Tanner, and Associates, by the way, you should have emails in front of you now, I turned in a while ago, you can reference to this, by the way. Hoyle, Tanner, your own consultants, that this $45,000 is supposed to pay for, couldn't even justify doing this SEA. These are your consultants. They've been doing this for 25 years for you. You've spent millions of dollars with them already, okay? They went on to say, as evidenced by an email dated May 5th, 2021, which you should have available with you right now, when Hoyle, Tanner, and Associates reached out to two FAA environmental specialist officials, asking them to help create justification for this SEA, really, create it. This is the same SEA that you're supposed to approve funding for, and they need to create the justification for it? Maybe it's just me, but if your own consultants have a hard time justifying it, maybe you should consider not doing it at all. As was stated by Mr. Joel a while ago, this has actually already been looked into several times, as far back as 1996 even. By the way, as he mentioned, this SEA is only going to mention 600 feet to the west. But as evidenced by emails to the FAA, the goal is to get 400 feet to the east also for a combined total of 1,000 feet still, which will require moving 2,100 feet of airport road closer to the Timoca River, which evidenced in the report they came out with in 2015 for your master plan update, and in the original environmental assessment for this in 2017, stated that was a really bad idea. In fact, it was estimated to cost about $7.5 million in $2,017. Coming forward to now, FAA says you got to put a cost escalator in there at 15% a year for four years. We're at $12 million, folks. $12 million.
Thank you. Mike Gelati, followed by Kelly Augett.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Gelati. I live at 702 Woodbridge Court, and I am excited, actually, to see the lengthy process of improving our municipal airport moving forward. As a marketing consultant, whose clients nearly all have been located in the state of Florida, I can attest to the benefit of being able to fly from Ormond Beach Municipal Airport to Panama City, Lakeland, Tallahassee, Bartow, Naples, and other cities that have little or no commercial air service. But I also wanted to speak for a moment about the economic development aspect of putting our best foot forward at Ormond Beach Municipal Airport. For some of the light manufacturing companies that Team Volusia Economic Development Corporation pursues, being located on or near an airport is very important. In fact, Team Volusia actively promotes Daytona Beach International Airport and Ormond Beach Municipal Airport and other general aviation airports in the county. Collectively, it makes a statement that we are supportive of aviation on many levels. It does seem to take forever to get improvements to the airport research, designed, funded, and approved, but we have come a long way, and I encourage continued forward motion in the evolution of our municipal airport. It's an important port of entry for our community, and I think it will play an increasingly important role in the evolution of Ormond Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Kelly Augett, followed by Ben Blankenship. Kelly Augett, followed by Ben Blankenship.
Volusia County, 5 Mile, Orman Airport, Overly District. I'm Kelly Augett, 655 Pine Land Trail. There's a lot of people that will be affected, and one just, and they're just learning about this. I'm just going to name off the where the extension's going to affect. Orman Lakes, Tuscana, Plantation Oaks, Halifax Plantation, Plantation Bay, Timoca Estates, Bear Creek, Pine Trails, Timoca Oaks, Northbrook, Mallard's Reach, Reflections Village, Winding Woods, Fiesta Heights, The Trails, The Falls, North 40, South 40, Spring Meadows, Coquina Point, Tidewater, Hidden Hills, Chelseaa Place, Seminole Woods, Bermuda Estates, Broadwater, Orman Green, Pine Land, Twin Whivers, and Timber Creek, Breakery Trails, and Hunter's Ridge. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Blankenship, followed by Sharon Trescott.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope you guys get to go home to a place like I got every afternoon. I can go back and watch the turkeys and their little babies run around in my yard and the big oak trees around my house. It's really nice. I spent five years trying to find a place here in Orman that had a little country along with the city. And I moved here in August, and I knew about the airport was there. We saw the planes, you know, flying over, but I knew nothing about this expansion or anything that was going on. Since then, I've talked to Mike and some of the other people around here, which I can say about Mike, he's probably read 1,000 pages of this thing. He's really up to speed on it, and he gives a lot of details and a lot of facts. So what I want to talk to you about is actually, I heard about the revenue, economic impact. I heard him come up and talk about how this expansion's going to bring jobs, but yet on your 2019 balance sheet, I didn't see any of that. You know, I don't see where the revenue comes from, other than coming from taxes out of our pockets. We may bring a few jobs in here, and that's indirect jobs, indirect taxes to you, but you get a lot more coming through the city, coming through cars, trucks, motorcycles, other things that come into the city as far as revenue is concerned. But I want to talk also about that you bring jobs, if you're talking about bringing jobs. You have an airport in Daytona, you have an airport in Flagler. Both of them can take jets, both of them can take cargo. What is the reason for this extension? Jets come in here now on this airport. So do the other planes, unless we're going to go to cargo planes. And you know what's going to take a lot of trees out? It's going to take trees on my property. All the things that I get to enjoy, that I spend all my time working for to get here and purchase, is going to go away. I hear these, most of these people in here talking about churches being torn down. You know, they had a song back in the '60s, "Take Paradise and Put Up a Parking Lot." I'm sure you guys have heard that song. Let's not become that. This city is beautiful, and it has a lot of other ways to bring economic impact, to bring money into this city. You have tourism, you have people coming from everywhere. Everybody wants to come to Florida now. There's no need for this extension on the airport. Actually, if it wasn't for the schools, I wouldn't even see a need for the airport. You've got seven nautical miles either way to have another airport. To me, you're putting money down the drain that we could spend on other things. Thank you, guys, for your time. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. Sharon Trescott, followed by Al Jorzak.
Sharon Trescott, 689 Pine Land Trail. Excuse me. My property joins the airport by about 300 feet in the back. And I want to tell you all, as an adjoining property owner, I knew nothing of this. I was never informed. I learned it from my neighbors. And I'd like for you all to understand that there's, in this audience tonight, there's quite a few people that are of the neighborhood, and if I don't, you don't mind, I'd like for them to either raise their hand or stand that may support this as well, that knew nothing of this. They have learned from us. And I think you all ought to really consider the awarding of this work order until you all look into it more. And in our search, we have uncovered quite a bit of interesting facts, and I think you all should clean up what is in the field now that you all may not even realize you have before you go further at any length. I have fumes from the jets on my property if they're taking off or leaving at the right time and the right direction. And I don't know how many others behind me may be experiencing that and the noise as well. We were all out there. The little planes have never bothered us. You've not had any complaints. It's the jets and the ball fields with hundreds of children. Do you all really want the big jet coming over and over hundreds of children or families along with the noise? Can they hear their calls and the loudspeakers? Is this the place to have jets? Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor and the Commission. And my name's Alan Jorzak. I live at 679 North Beach Street. I've been a business owner in the industrial park almost 30 years now. I've been in many cities in many parts of the country and communities, and I have been thoroughly devoted in my, since getting out of college, to helping improve the mix of the communities that I've lived in by having a balance between tourism and manufacturing, something that balances your workforce, balances the tax base, and gives you the opportunity to expand your city in a number of different ways and not be oriented strictly in one direction. In my view, I've served a number of years on the planning board, and I've watched the city grow. And one of the things that is absolutely imperative to an area that has been primarily tourist is a, an industrial, a light industrial base, a clean, light industrial base that brings higher-paying jobs, keeps the kids in the community that graduate from the local colleges, and provides a overall economic benefit, which really aids the entire community in terms of changing the tax base and keeping it from going strictly to residential to taking the industrial segment of that for the manufacturing segment and adding to that tax base. The airport here has always been a matter of contention with respect to those individuals that do not see the need for it and those individuals that see that there is a positive benefit by having it. The airport needs to grow to what its capability is, and that is in your city's strategic plan. I couldn't be more eloquent than Mr. Slick and Mr. Gelati in terms of what its economic impact is, but we have been struggling to develop the crossings area now for better than 15 years, and this is one of the key elements to make that happen. So I would encourage you to look beyond the initial objections to the growth aspect of this and consider where this city will be in 20 or 30 years and how you want it to develop. This is probably the biggest asset that you want to have.
Thank you.
In addition to redevelopment of the golf course.
Any questions? Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Roddimer, Commission?
I, oh.
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I did want to ask Brian a couple of questions.
I just need a motion and a second for discussion purposes, and then we'll...
Move approval.
Seconded the motion.
Seconded, and recognize Commissioner Littleton for questions for Mr. Roddimer.
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this item because I didn't want it to seem like this was being railroaded through, and I wanted staff to address a couple things I've seen online that seem, you know, quite out there. Mr. Roddimer, you know, a lot of people are saying on social media that we're going to have, like, passenger airline jets landing at the airport. I've actually seen this in comments section in social media. Is that true?
That is not true. The fleet of aircraft that currently uses the airport will continue to do so, but there is no expectation that carrier services will happen at the Orman Beach Airport. It's a general aviation facility, serves as a reliever, but will not carry those types of aircraft.
And furthermore, noise, is the runway extension going to mitigate noise, or is it going to increase the noise at, like, Bear Creek, for example?
As identified in the project benefits, the project will actually help reduce or mitigate noise. A longer runway, even 600 feet, allows aircraft taking off and landing longer approach zone so that they'll be able to take off and rise faster and therefore be able to be out of the zones that are over the communities, and then in coming in, they'll be able to slow down and reduce, or throttle down in order to land, thereby reducing noise as well.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner Persis.
Yeah. How many trees would be cut down back in that area, even if we extend the runway?
Well, it's my understanding that with the runway extension itself, the city will be clearing trees that are currently on the, within the airport property, but I don't really, can't speak specifically to the number of trees that would be affected on private property. Those are trees that may have already been identified by the Florida Department of Transportation as being needed to be taken care of for safety purposes for existing planes approaching the runway.
For the planes to land or take off? I mean, there's a certain height limit. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
Okay, but as far as, is there going to be clearing, would there be clearing of trees?
Well, I can have Stephen Licklider. Like I said, there are, there will be trees cleared off of airport property, but with respect to trees that are not on our prop, that are not on airport property, there may be trees that are cleared, but it's not clear if it's, I mean, it wouldn't be related to the runway extension project. But I can have Stephen answer any specific questions to that.
Okay. I, do you need, can you add anything, or did he say it clearly?
Essentially, that's correct. There will be clearing on airport property to provide the necessary clear zones on both sides and on the end of the runway. As far as any tree trimming off of the airport, every year, the DOT does an airport licensing inspection.
Right.
And they actually measure from the end of the runway, the approaches to the runway. And if they find a tree or other obstruction that is penetrating what's called the base of the approach, they may require that tree to be trimmed at least 10 to 15 feet below the floor of the approach. That's not something we have any control over. That's something that a state agency mandates from year to year. The only clearing that's going to be done as a part of this project will be on airport property.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for...
Yeah, I have a question.
Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I spoke with a citizen earlier today, and he brought up the noise abatement activity that was undertaken a few years ago. I think there was a desired takeoff pattern, maybe landing pattern also. Can you just talk about that and how that works and what the effects of it have been?
Sure. I think I'd be best if I had to have our airport manager discuss that with you, because he handles all of the issues related to noise abatement. Commissioner, I'd like to make sure I'm understanding your question. Would you please repeat that?
Yeah, it wasn't a few, several years ago. I mean, it's before I got on the commission, I believe, the, there was a...
Noise Abatement Task Force.
Yeah, Noise Abatement Task Force. And it, maybe you could just talk about that, because I'm not really familiar with it. How does it work and what does it do and...
In 2009, we had a Noise Abatement Task Force, which was made up of people who had stakeholders on the airport as well as members from the community. And we had two labs, which were conducted by outside parties. We had meetings for a period of about nine months to talk about noise abatement and noise abatement techniques that might be employed at the airport to improve the situation for, for the most part, for the communities east of the airport who have most of the overflights over their areas. We developed a series of procedures, which are published on the website, and we also have some procedures that are actually on signage at the airport to remind pilots of the procedures that we request. They are voluntary procedures because we are not, by federal regulation, allowed to mandate procedures. The FAA is the sole arbiter of anything that happens in the airspace above the city. But we do regularly communicate with the flight schools, make sure that they have our voluntary procedures as part of their curriculum, and that the instructors are teaching their students to follow them as much as they can, safety being the bottom line. If that answers your question, sir.
And you brought up flight schools. Are there, are most of the landings and takeoffs, are they from Orman Beach-based flight schools? Or are they from flight schools that are...
Orman Beach has one large flight school, Sunrise Aviation, and a great, a great many of our flights are from Sunrise Aviation, but we also get a lot of traffic from Embry-Riddle, Air Nautical University, from Phoenix East Aviation, and there are several other flight schools in the area that will come to Orman Beach and do pattern work or come here as part of a cross-country flight. So it's not just aircraft that are based at Orman Beach, no.
And if we wanted to limit those non-Orman Beach-based businesses from using our airport, is that possible? Can you do that?
It is not possible. The airport is a public transportation facility. We have no way to restrict any member of the public from using that facility.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Stephen, I've got a couple, if you can just answer for me, since 2004, I've heard the rumor that Delta or American is going to start flying MD-88s or MD-90s or 737s or whatever into the Orman Beach Airport. Has that ever been true?
That has never been true.
Okay, so no commercial airliner, other than maybe an emergency, has ever landed here, or there's no plans for any commercial airliner to land here? They need much more runway than we would have, even if we extended it 2,000 feet. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The second thing is, and this is like an alphabet soup of terms, we, we're doing a, this is an SEA, a supplemental environmental application.
Assessment.
Assessment. And it's for 600 feet. Now, and this is how government works. We already paid good money for a environmental assessment for 1,000 feet going to the west, and we got a Fonzie for that, which should mean happy days, right? We got our Fonzie, finding of no significant impact. So if we go 1,000 feet, no problem. Now, we're going to go 600 feet, keep this project entirely on Orman Beach Airport property, but the FAA requires us to do a supplemental environmental analysis, even though we're doing 400 less feet than we were going to do. So that's, you know, now we have to pay again, basically, is what they're telling us.
That is correct. We did, Hoyle, Tanner, and city staff did inquire about FAA to try and understand or better understand the justification for it, but the bottom line is FAA is requiring that we do the supplemental to address the purpose and need for the project and study any changes that perhaps were not studied during the first environmental assessment.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
That's a great point, Mayor.
Thank you.
About how government can be really good at wasting money.
Right. Particularly the federal government, but, all right. I don't have any other questions. Any other questions for Stephen or Brian? Commission is with us for discussion and/or at any time if anyone wants to call the vote.
Call the question?
Yeah.
You ready to call the question?
I am.
All right. Wendy, please call the vote.
Okay. Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Purnington?
Yes. And 7K.
Invitation to bid 2021 roadway resurfacing, bid number 2021-21.
And I don't remember who pulled this one.
I did.
Commissioner Selby?
Yeah. Should I give it to the crowd a minute?
Sure. Chief, can you help these folks get out in a timely manner? Thank you, and I don't think they need to be engaging with the audience at this time either. think they need to be engaging with the audience at this time either. Commissioner Selby, on K.
Yeah, I, Mayor, thank you, Mayor. I, I pulled this item because of the write-up. And I wanted, I think it's great that we have Sean here to address this, but I just wanted to, you know, I did some real quick math. We're going to do 2.65 miles of our 187 miles of roads. We're going back to paving versus the micro resurfacing. And, you know, we're, we're now down to, I mean, as a, as a ratio, 2.65 miles is 1.5% of all of our roads, which means that at that rate, with the amount of dollars that we have allocated now at that rate, assuming those are constant over time, which obviously they're not, the costs are going to go up, which is going to decrease at the, you know, at the, at the dollar amount. But anyway, it would take 70 years to repave the entire city at this current rate. Okay, so that concerns me because I'm very proud of the fact that we have a dedicated millage, that we allocate money to do this, but we're, I think, I don't remember where we were. I think we were at about 40 or 45 years with the micro resurfacing. If I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, I think we estimate a typical road is about 25 years.
That, that's, that's the industry, you know, standard that you would expect to find, yes.
Yeah, so we're, we're now at a rate that's one-third of the industry standard, you know. So I just wanted, I wanted you to address it. I also, I'm also concerned about the fact that, that we're having to resurface some roads that we just within the last year or two micro surfaced or paving them that we were just, you know, in the last year or two.
I appreciate your math that you did here. We did that same math a couple of months ago as we were preparing for the street's budget. We, we acknowledge that and that's something why we started doing the micro-surfacing kind of as a test a couple, four years ago. We've done it for four years. Started out very strong, had some good, had some success. Tidewater was a good example of one that went very well for us. Like a lot of these types of processes, there's only so many people who do them. The first year, they hook you, they put their best crew on, out there for you. As you get a little bit more, as they get a little bit more comfortable, they're, you're not getting their best crew and it kind of, and this, the, the results show through. The micro-surfacing that we did this year was enough to make us rethink doing it because it's, it's more of a hit or miss than when, when, even if you have a 25-year resurfacing, you want that new road to be nice, smooth tarmac. You want, you want a nice product. You want to be proud of. You don't want your child to be born in your house and live their entire life in that house and never see it resurfaced again. You want to be able to see something that, that's the, the, the quality of the life that we have here in Orman Beach. So we spent a lot of time this spring looking at that. I asked our engineers who are, who manage this program for us not to include micro-resurfacing this year. The, the number of streets that we're redoing, it's not, it's not greatly significant, but the, but the residents were not pleased enough for us to not let it go unattended. So that's why we are, we're doing those. Those should have been resurfaced likely. Anyway, so if we hadn't done micro-surfacing, we would be resurfacing those streets this year. It was a little bit of a hiccup in an experiment that helped us to stretch it a little bit more. We saw this as an opportunity. The micro-resurfacing, the chip ceiling has come a long way in the past 20 or 30 years. We thought that it was worth trying to help stretch that dollar. Three or four years ago, five years ago, we saw that it was getting, stretching out longer, stretching out to 60 years. When we started this program in 1997, asphalt was $37 a ton. This year, it's over $100 a ton. So we, that was the purpose for the micro-resurfacing. The results we got don't make us happy with using it, so that's why we want to do it. We, we did a lot of effort this, this, this spring with our, with our engineers to take a look at what we need to do to get us in a better place and hopefully as we go through our budgets, we'll, we'll have something that, that can help get us closer where we should be and, and the, the expectations of the citizens.
Thank you. Commissioner Selby, anyone else? Stephen or Sean, I'm sorry. 187 miles, is that what you call lane miles or is that?
That is, that is 170 miles of roadways. Those are the roads that we manage. Those aren't the DOT roads, the county roads. Those are our city streets, our, our neighborhoods that we, that we maintain. So lane miles, you can double that. It's, it's 130, 187 miles of, of city maintained streets.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate you bringing that up, Commissioner Selby, because just like we talked about last meeting, Ms. McGuire pointed out, we're losing significant funding from the road taxes on top of this. So I don't know if it's time to readdress the amount that we set aside for, you know, to try to do something better than 1% of our roads per year. I think our residents probably would expect that. It's just a matter of what the cost is going to be, what's going to be reasonable in the long run.
Right.
Anyone else have questions on this? Then we just need a motion in a second.
I'll move item K.
Second, the motion.
Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And does any commission member wish to comment on the consent agenda? Commissioner Kent?
Yes, just briefly, item 11. Our contract auto-renewed with Yellowstone Landscape, who I believe at one point was Austin Outdoors. I'm proud that we, this, this prior commission decided to, to change contractors many years ago and go with Austin Outdoors. I just remind this commission that back then, it was about a million dollars a year is what the city paid. That's, the scope of the work has increased and now we're at 1.7 million dollars a year. I only mention that because I am a, a huge advocate for grass whenever you are going to have a picnic or you want to throw a ball with your kid, but it is, it's pretty to look at, but there are better choices in the middle of Granada Boulevard and Nova Road and things like that. Some of those choices are Asiatic Jasmine and Perennial Peanut. They are excellent ground cover that need very few trims a year and it would decrease this cost tremendously. The city did a test strip on Granada Boulevard next to the Rivergate Shopping Plaza and near Nova Road. I, I haven't looked at it recently, but this was, I mean, seven, eight years ago. And I looked at it like a year ago and it looked great, a small little area. If you're not sure what I'm talking about, in front of the Reflections Buildings on Granada Boulevard, the ground cover is Asiatic Jasmine and it's, it's a ground cover. It's, it's beautiful. If, if you want something closer to City Hall, if you just jump over the Granada Bridge heading east towards the beach or my house, right in front of our tennis center and the casements and near Billy's Tap Room, right next to Granada Boulevard, there's, again, Asiatic Jasmine right there. So I just say that in case there's a commissioner or two that says, you know what, let's start the transformation so that we can use less water, less fertilizer and keep grass where it's supposed to be, a place where you sit down with your family and have a picnic or where you throw a frisbee or a ball with your kid or dog. So yeah, that's all I wanted to say about this item. Thanks.
Thank you. And we move to second reading of ordinances, 8A.
Ordinance number 2021-18, an ordinance approving the final plat for the Orman Grand Subdivision, a planned residential development, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2021-18, read by title only.
I don't have any cards. Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, 9A.
Resolution number 2021-100, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Orman Beach, Florida approving a preliminary plat for Plantation Oaks Phase 1A, a planned residential subdivision, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-100, read by title only.
Thank you. And we'll ask Planning Director Stephen Spraker to speak on this item.
Good evening, Stephen Spraker, Planning Director. This is the preliminary plat for the first portion of Phase 1A of Plantation Oaks. If you recall, this is Plantation Oaks right here, Old Dixie Highway runs along here. So this is the location. The project proposes 121 multifamily lots on basically 100 acres. There's some existing stormwater retention located within the property here and here. And there's also a neighborhood commercial center of about 25,000 square feet located at the entrance, which has served this project and other projects along in there. So if you looked at the whole Plantation Oaks site plan, it's right along here and you can see the stormwater that's already existing that would serve this project. This is the second part of the three-step process. The planned residential development was approved based on Volusia County approvals. This allows the applicant to go to construction and then it'll come back to the city commission as a final plat. The planning board recommended approval of 7-0 and staff is also recommending approval. The applicant is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. I don't have any cards. Any questions for Stephen or the applicant? Move approval?
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we go to reports, suggestions and requests, and we will start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you notice, as part of the agenda packet, I provided a, a new monthly report to you where you have all your documents in one place. It includes the monthly financial report, the monthly development report, the monthly building report, the monthly economic development report. So I think that it's a better way to communicate that information to you over, over time. So I'll start to include that each month. So as a result of that, if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer that. I, I just wanted to speak briefly and I think Wendy, you have a video for me. Some of you may know that there was a fire at 867 South Atlantic over the weekend. The Orman Beach Fire Department, from the time of the call to the time it was extinguished, was 16 minutes. That was a very bad fire and it could have taken the whole building. I think you might have a picture or two as well, Wendy. So I, I'm very proud of Orman Beach Fire Department and Orman Beach PD that helped contain that blaze and make sure it didn't go any further. Station 91, Josh, Josh Katie, Randy Bennett and Michael D. Benedet and Engine 93, Tabitha Wu, Francis Artoriano and Mark Allen were chiefs on scene to help extinguish that blaze. So very proud of, of the work they did to ensure everybody was safe and that we didn't lose the whole building. And I don't have anything else to report unless you have any questions of me.
Any questions for the City Manager? Thank you. And Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
Good evening. I just wanted to remind everybody that today kicks off hurricane season, so we will prepare for the worst, plan for the, plan for the worst, hope for the best. The city, as usual, will begin our preparation efforts for city facilities as well as assisting our residents in their preparations and we'll be pushing out information on social, social media and on the website. And the tax-free holiday is in effect until June 6th, so do your shopping and get your supplies and hopefully we will not use them and then you can, I always try and use them after that and we, we, you know, go using all our paper items and bottled water, but it's well worth it. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that reminder. And back to the City Manager.
Just a reminder, Mr. Mayor, as part of your agenda package, you receive the budget schedule. Staff will present you with the draft proposed budget documents on June 18th and then on Tuesday, July 13th, you will not have another meeting until July 13th and that is a workshop only to review the CIP and the draft budget. And then staff will work to update those documents based on your workshop and re-present those documents to you on July 15th. And then on July 20th, at 5:30, you will have a workshop to review that final budget information. And at that meeting that night, you will review your tentative millage that you need to send to the property appraiser by the very first of August. So please take a look at that schedule. City Manager Assistant Terry Hampshire will be calling you to try to schedule individual meetings with you to review the budget. So staff is working hard. Kelly and her staff are working hard to, to balance the budget. And during that time that we meet with you individually, we'll talk about the American Rescue funding and the limited spending options we have for that and some of the proposals that we are considering. And then we'll talk with you at that during the budget as well.
Thank you. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Persis.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. I have some really wonderful news to share about several things. First of all, I attended with my husband the Taste of Orman, saw a lot of people there at a different location at Destination Daytona, but it was very nice. I missed Rockefeller Gardens with the tents and everything, but it was really a wonderful event. It was nice to see people and to get to socialize. We got to sample great food from great Orman restaurants. It was just, it was just really, really a pleasant experience. And yesterday was a wonderful ceremony the city put on for Memorial Day and I just want to thank staff for everything you did because I thought it was just exceptional. Our speaker was exceptional, mayor's comments were exceptional. I just think everything just, it really, it just really touched my heart because I think the message for Memorial Day is to, you know, we are fortunate to be alive and we need to make a difference to those that didn't quite make it, that were, that sacrificed for us so we can make the world a little bit better. So that's the message I always take from Memorial Day. So I just had to make that comment. I just thought it was just really a wonderful morning. And lastly, I would just like to say that students in Orman Beach are very lucky because all fifth graders and eighth graders for the next three years will get a free field study to the Museum of Arts and Sciences in Daytona Beach, thanks to the Lomans who donated some money to help those students. So I'm just very grateful that as a former principal, teacher, assistant principal, it's just a wonderful thing for children to be able to get out of the school building and go somewhere and learn something. So with that, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Littleton?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Persis, you touched on it. Taste of Orman was great. It was great to get out and socialize with people again and it was nice to see so many restaurants come out, especially considering the labor shortage we have in the country and that. It was a great event. Also, the Memorial Day Ceremony, another wonderful event. I mean, it's a prime example of why Orman Beach is a great place to live. I absolutely loved it and remarkable. I'll end tonight with, of course, I went to one of the Timoca Oaks developer meetings on May 20th and I noticed that many of the citizens were asking the lawyers and the engineers about funding through Volusia Forever and Echo and they wanted to see if that could be done. So I say we help them answer that question. So I would say we, we, we send a letter to the county council respectfully asking them whether they are interested in purchasing some or all of the Timoca Oaks Golf Course with Volusia Forever or Echo funding. Leave it at that and see what they say.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's it. Thank you, Commissioner Littleton. And Commissioner Selby?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, obviously, all of us attended the Memorial Day Remembrance yesterday and it was a, it was a very great event. And it's really a credit to the leisure services staff that, you know, that makes these things happen. And, you know, I got there early and I stayed late and, and, you know, when you see the, the trucks pull up that they have to load all the equipment onto and everything, you, 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 you know, when you're just there as a spectator and a participant, you really don't pay attention to all of the details that it takes to make- to all of the details that it takes to make a great event like that, but we have a... Robert, you can please let your staff know that we definitely appreciate everything that they do to make these events happen. The, I wanted to just mention the airport, and again, I want to focus in on our staff. I haven't spent as much time, it would appear, as you have, Commissioner Littleton, on social media because I didn't know as much of the detail as you explained. However, my point, my point in that is I do, I am aware, though, of some pretty serious personal attacks on staff people, specifically Mr. Lichtleiter and I believe also Mr. Rodamacher. And, you know, we, when we run for office, we sign up for that. You know, we're fair game for that. But I don't, I don't think city employees are fair game for that. I think that's inappropriate. And I don't know, I just want you to know that, I don't know that there's anything we can, that I can really do about it, you know? I don't know there's anything we can do about it. And maybe the, maybe Ms. Shanahan has some guidance on that of what we could do about that, but it's, it's not appropriate. And, you know, you're just doing your jobs, and for people to besmirch your reputations is not appropriate. And so I just want you to know that I don't put any stock in that whatsoever. I know you guys are doing the right thing, and I know you always do the right thing, and so I'm, I got your back, even though I might not be able to do anything behind your back, but I'll try if I can. I wanted to mention just something about Avalon Park. I'm, you know, I'm the squeaky wheel on this thing. I really would like us to have a workshop, even if we don't have all of the information. I got a copy. Staff was kind enough to provide me a copy of the plat that's been approved. Maybe preliminary, I'm not sure, Stephen, preliminary plat that's been approved. But what, you know, in just my cursory review of it, it's, I think it's 1,500 homes? Is that, is that the right number? Fifteen, approximately 1,500 homes and about 80,000 square feet of commercial along Granada. And, but there's 40-foot lots in there. I mean, it's, most of the lots are 40-foot lots, 40 feet wide. And so I'm very concerned that while they may be, I, I just don't know enough to know whether or not... But my, my concern is that they're using the entitlements that they have on just a portion of the land, and they're cramming a lot of stuff into a small area, which frees up the ability to come back later and get more entitlements on the balance of the land so that they end up with the same density that they've asked for from the very beginning. And they'll have several hundred residents who will be, who will love it, who will say, "Well, why wouldn't you want more of this?" You know? So, so anyway, I just think the quicker we can have a discussion about what they're doing, the quicker we can figure out how we might want to respond to that. And then finally, the church, 56 North Beach Street. I have a question for Ms. Shanahan. Do you, do you know whether or not anything is being salvaged or there's any attempt to salvage anything?
I, I do not believe that there's any attempt to salvage any of that.
Okay, so there is an organ in there, and actually, Mayor, I spoke to your dad about it. He feels that organ has value, and, you know, even if it doesn't have any value, but somebody wants it, you know, I sure would hate the opportunity to have that go into the landfill just like the rest of the building. The doors, some of the doors are actually pretty interesting. There are other architectural elements inside the building itself. If we're going to demolish the buildings, the stained glass, maybe that, maybe some of that can be salvaged. I just, I just think there's, there may be some, if, if we actually end up demolishing the building, which I hope we don't, or at least not with, not for the next six months, I would hope that we would explore any salvage opportunities that there are, architectural salvage opportunities. The other comment I wanted to make about that is, at our last meeting, I was, I was, you know, I, I was, I don't want to say upset, but I was, I was emotionally charged on this topic. And I forgot to express my concern. I think I did say it in my comments, but as we were deciding which option, I, the one thing that I don't like about what we are doing, if we end up demolishing the building and we make a parking lot, I have a real problem with the double standard. I have a problem with the city allowing the city to build a shell parking lot when we would not allow anybody in the private sector to do that. And I think that just sets a very bad example. It puts a very bad taste in anybody's mouth who, who wants to, who builds anything in the city. And so I would like us, if we end up going down that path, I would like us to take another look at that. And then finally, I'd just say, I think Ms. Press really kind of laid it out there that hopefully one of you, one of you three, I don't want to put you on the spot, but obviously I am putting you on the spot, would, would seek to reconsider, seek a motion to reconsider because we can't do it. Those of us who voted in the negative cannot propose a motion to reconsider. That you would do that simply for the opportunity to provide the community six months to figure out whether or not they can come up with a plan that's acceptable to, you know, a majority of this commission. And, and I think everybody who is of that opinion, that they would like that six months, recognizes that the bar has been set very, very high, that you all are ready to demolish that building immediately, and that if they don't come up with a really great plan, that it has no hope. And so I just would, I just would implore one of you to, to say, "Okay, I'll, I'll do that," and I'll, and then hopefully we'll have a second. I have a question for the City Attorney. Does a, does a, can only a yes vote second, or can anybody second a motion to reconsider?
A lot of loaded questions in those comments. I'll start with the reconsideration piece, and then I'll move back to the, the interest in some, some objects within a church. So under your rules, motions for consideration have certain benchmark criteria to me. Now, to be clear, you all set your own rules, right? So you can kind of do what you want. But the way the motion for reconsidered consideration is designed to work is to address erroneous information or to correct, or take into consideration new information that wasn't previously considered. So those are, those are kind of your, your thresholds there. Certain matters cannot be considered. One of those includes matters on which a contract has been awarded. And this is where it gets a little tricky because a contract for demolition has been awarded. So if you wanted to do a reconsideration, you would have to, you would have to give some consideration as to how you're going to treat the contract, right? Not that it can't be done, but it just adds another element of complication to, to the, to the matter. But procedurally, the way the motion would work would be only a member on the prevailing side can make a motion to reconsider. It can then be seconded by anybody. So the first thing under, under discussion for voting on is whether you would actually vote to reconsider the matter. If it, if it passes, then it puts the matter back to where, to the status it occupied immediately preceding the vote. You can go through another full discussion and another full vote. That obviously would have to occur, should occur at an agenda, a subsequent agenda meeting because it's likely going to require some additional materials. That's probably a lot more information that you wanted on that. I think I answered your question on the reconsideration piece, but let me know if I didn't. So getting back to the items inside the church. The city conducted an auction for all of those things. There was no interest in those materials. It's my understanding, the staff also reached out and conducted some other, tried to identify some other sources for some of those items, and there was no interest. So I think it's probably fair to say that based on the extensive work by the city staff that there's no value to those items. So if you can, if, if there's another suitable alternative to disposing of them other than tearing them down, you could probably, you can consider that. There are some things that we would need to address if you're interested in, in terms of doing that. A private party would be solely responsible using their own resources to remove that. It wouldn't be at the city taxpayers' expense would be one, one criteria. But then you have some public safety issues or personal safety issues and liability issues. So, you know, the lawyer in me would say, you know, you need some hold harness indemnification provisions, some releases, some liability language and those sorts of things. So it seemed like an easy ask, but there's some complicating factors to all of that. That's probably way more information than you wanted. I think it answered your question, but probably it's a little muddier than you expected. So, questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, let's see. That's it?
Good deal.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Kent.
Our Memorial Day remembrance was appropriate. It was classy and it was moving. And Robert Carolyn, you and your staff are so behind the scenes on every major event that happens in Ormond Beach, and you're really good at what you do. And as Commissioner Selby said, you know, there's so much prep and then cleanup, but it wasn't long after the event, my family and I were, were heading west on Granada, and it was like nothing even happened there that morning. I mean, your crew had everything taken down, and I heard wonderful things from community members about the event. So I just wanted to say, great job and thank you very much. With that thread, we have Ike Leary, who on Memorial Day is giving out free hot dogs at the Ormond Bait Shop, and his mantra is, "Free hot dogs till they run out." And it's just a, again, it's, it's that type of service, and it's, it's, in its own right, it's classy, and it just shines brightly for Ormond Beach. And, I mean, come on, you're an ambassador of Ormond Beach. I mean, that's what a good ambassador would do. Yeah, you're wearing the shirt. So thank you for that. And Chief Severs, great work with your department. You know, we worked hard years ago to get Fire Station 91 right where it is and to make sure that there was an incredible fire station-themed playground right next to it. Some of us helped push the fire vehicles into those garage bays. And Ms. Shanahan, I'm not surprised that it was only 16 minutes for our men and women to take care of that. And then, you know, who's your right hand with that? Chief Godfrey. You know, his, his men and women are, are right there, which leads me to you two, just to say, I've, I've been with the city about 19 years, oh, no, not really, 18, I guess, 18 years. And it's so nice to hear the rank and file talk about you two. Because you two know what it's like. You've not forgotten what it's like to be a firefighter and a paramedic and a police officer and a sergeant and a lieutenant. You've not forgotten those jobs that you've had. And the men and women that work for you rave about your leadership, and that's a powerful thing. And then that brings me back to Ms. Shanahan, who she hired both of you. And with, a big piece of leadership for me is you hire, don't ever hire a problem, ever. Don't ever hire a problem. But you hire the right people and then get out of their way and let them do their job. And Ms. Shanahan, we hired the right person with you, but then you have hired the right people and you get out of the way and you let them do their job. And, and, you know, I'm talking about you two right now, but I was just talking about Robert, Carolyn. You've got Kelly McGuire, you've got Sean Finley. All of it just runs like a machine should run. And it's, it's healthy and it's good, and I thank you for that. I don't know if he's still in the house, but Ned Huda, happy 17-year anniversary with the city of Ormond Beach today. 17 years with the city. And I appreciate all the hard work you, you do for, for this community as our IT director. And last but not least, is Jim Schultz still here? There he is. I have said this probably once every five years, and it's time for me to say it again. I love your passion. You are concerned about keeping people healthy, and you come before us almost every meeting and you talk about a myriad of things, but it always comes back to that fluoride that you know I'm passionate about as well. And, you know, you, you don't, you don't give up. You're actually in my mind like one of the best fighters I know, you know? You just, you are, you are consistent and you are passionate and you are caring about your fellow man and you want them healthy. And I just wanted you to know, I, I appreciate it every meeting. I'm not going to say it every meeting. You're going to have to wait another five years probably to hear it, but I just appreciate it. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Memorial Day was, excuse me, fantastic. People were just happy to be back together again, and not having to wear a mask if they'd been vaccinated, I think, was, was a positive, kind of a return to normalcy, if you will. That was the first event where we had been like that, other than, of course, Taste of Ormond was, was much like that. But the band did a phenomenal job and, I mean, it's just an incredible touch to have that great group of volunteers perform. The sign interpreter, I believe, was a volunteer, and that was an incredible touch as well. And so I just wanted to mention those two specifically. Taste of Ormond was a fantastic event. It's, it's the best of Ormond Beach in one location, and they wanted to be in the gardens. And when you talk to some of the board members of Ormond Main Street, even though it's much more expensive to rent that huge tent in the gardens, that's where they want to be because that's the downtown, that's the Main Street section. That's just one of the events they do that brings people into our downtown. And so I know Main Street was happy to have the event. They need those dollars as a fundraiser, and hopefully they'll be back in their rightful place next year despite the additional, the additional cost. Commissioner Persis, the Lomans are incredible benefactors for our, our county. And, you know, as a child who took a few field trips, back when field trips were a little more readily available, I think, with the Volusia County Public Schools, I went to the planetarium a few times and had good memories, particularly the opportunity to buy some things at the gift shop as part of that, and then watching my children do the same thing. And then field trips kind of went away for a while, so I'm excited to see them brought back through that generous gift, and I think it's going to enhance the lives of, of a lot of children. So congratulations to them for that. Randy and Joyce, what Commissioner Selby said about the attacks on staff, whether it's Brian or Stephen, whether it's our police department, whether, whoever it is, it's always unacceptable not to be professional, and maybe the two of you can put your heads together on what an appropriate response, strong response that doesn't condone that type behavior would be. Because I think your commission would endorse that. Like Commissioner Selby said, there may not be much we can do, but I would like to look at, at what we can do to keep our professionals in a happy, safe, working environment. I look at some of the people who have come and gone over the years and chosen other professions because they're professions where you don't have to put up with a lot of the foolishness that people who work in city government have to put up with. And so anything we can do to encourage people to do the right thing and not, certainly not attack city staff... not attack city staff, I think would be, would be appropriate. As far as Commissioner Selby, the motion to reconsider, I'm out on that one. I think that decision had already been made, and a lot of people, for whatever reason, were late to the discussion on that. Just looking online at the Associated Pipe Organ Builders of America, they indicate that a used pipe organ moved to a new location can be found for as little as $30,000. A new instrument can cost anywhere up to $1 million. So, you know, $30,000 would pay for a third of the shell parking lot, if that's what eventually goes there. But I agree with you, the city should be held to the same standards we would require of a private developer, private citizen, particularly along the river, where you have water quality concerns, and you're not putting in water treatment areas, you're just putting in a shell parking lot so all that stuff can wash right into the river. Those are the concerns that I had about a shell parking lot. So I think we need to, if we do nothing else, at least look at that, because the city has a responsibility for water quality, and that's important. I think it was overlooked kind of in the, in the whole consideration of that project to tear down the church. So that's all stuff for future meetings. Right now, with nothing else left to add, we are adjourned. Thank you all.